Call the meeting order and ask for a roll call.
Blueear.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mennel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrot.
Here.
Join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments tonight? No public hearings or presentations. The consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the February 17, 2025 meeting and the approval of the bills. Can we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
I have one thing on the item here tonight. The appointment of Sam Rick Taylor as village clerk for the term expiring April 30, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sam Rick Taylor.
Having been appointed to the office of village clerk.
Having been appointed to the office of village clerk.
Of the village of Morton.
Of the village of Morton.
Tazewell County, Illinois.
Tazewell County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That all my members.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now we're going to put you to work with one of the longest agendas we've had in months. Village clerk, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Sorry, Julia, I was looking at you. Village administrator, Julia.
Nothing tonight, Charlie.
Chief of police.
One item tonight, Your Honor. Request to waive formal bidding for acceptance of proposal from the Meridian Rapid Defense Group for 27 Archer 1,200 mobile barriers and one beam gate system.
If we can have a motion.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, so last year the village purchased 50 barriers from the Meridian Corporation in addition to one beam gate and we, I'd spoke in September about the success of deploying them during the pumpkin festival in addition to some other events and one of the things that we wanted to do, we debriefed after the pumpkin festival last year and we met with basically a safety committee that we had formed that was consistent with various stakeholders throughout the village. It had law enforcement, fire and EMS, public works, the municipal engineer, elected officials, and the city administrator. And what we determined was to basically fortify the event in the manner in which we thought was most safe, we would need to purchase additional barriers. And so you'll see there's a proposal for $231,000 to purchase those 27 additional barriers and the beam gate. And also included in your packet is something that Andrew, the GIS manager, prepared that showed the existing barrier locations in addition to where we think we need to add barriers and then the gate, which would be on Adam Street on the backside of Jefferson School. So another thing that I kind of wanted to point out was after the terrorist attack in New Orleans, that a municipal liability insurance fund issued a safety bulletin and in that safety bulletin, they highlighted the fact that since 2014, 70% of all attacks, since they have been keeping track of what they consider vehicle ramming attacks, 70% of those have occurred just since 2014 and the importance of municipalities to address the ongoing problem. What I found in reading the safety bulletin was that the village of Morton is already doing a lot of the things that they recommend as best practices, such as, you know, forming a committee that involves all the stakeholders, not just simply law enforcement and also doing things such as taking into consideration paths in which vehicles could travel, not solely exclusive to the roadways, which I think you saw in New Orleans where they were using squad cars. And that was one thing that we had discussed in the past about vehicles not being the most effective form of providing security as scenes that have a high density of pedestrians. And so we've tried to address that with this additional recommendation of 27 barriers to, you know, cover sidewalks and things like that where the vehicles could maneuver around some of the other barriers that we had put into place.
Thank you.
You know, it's unfortunate we have to plan against things like that, but even, you know, the New Orleans thing, not too long ago, even today, there was a Mannheim, Germany, there was an instance where the, I believe it was a farmer's market, I didn't catch the whole story, but drove into a farmer's market and it's terrible, but we have to try to prevent this stuff, but I think it's important.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. It is unfortunate these things happen and unfortunately it's generally more than one life that is lost. And if we can save, I put these barricades up, that's what they're paying. So let's continue to be proactive in preventing, because we know what's going on.
Very wise advice. No others? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else, chief?
One thing I didn't mention was when we worked with Meridian, they were kind enough to give us last year's discounted rate on these as well.
Okay. All right, corporation counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Services.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works.
Couple items tonight, Your Honor. First one, item A in front of you is Resolution 35-25. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for the Main Street project.
Can I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 35-25.
Second.
So quick summary, we were awarded $880,000 through POETS in Surface Transportation Block grant funding towards the preservation of Main Street from Jackson Street to Cortlandt Street. This includes mainly the mill and overlay and patching of Main Street. So as a result, we need to proceed with the Phase One engineering, which is this, which will take approximately 15 months from notice to proceed. I will add the $360,000, kind of not to exceed, is a little steeper. I talked to trustee Parrot a little bit, but we did expand the scope. Unfortunately, we did not get the portion of the bike trail that we were hoping to get on the west side. And then, you know, we've been looking, the mayor and I have been working with Caterpillar on an entrance to the back of their facility, so trying to combine some of that. So between that, the couple IDSs at Nebraska Harding and really looking at pedestrian work, even along the Harding, you know, from Maine to Cortlandt Corridor, now that we've put apartments up there, there's no sidewalk. I'm not saying we proceed with putting sidewalk in, but I would like to look at that corridor. So I've asked to expand the scope a little bit because if we do with the Phase One, I think we'll be able to get some additional funding at some point for the trail portion. If not, worst case, we do have some local funds that we've been working on through the, you know, community foundation, but I think we need to include that all as a part of the IDOT Phase One engineering. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
What fiscal year is the funding?
This would be FY '28.
'28.
So most likely summer of '28 is what we're looking at. At least construction of the mill and overlay patching and then hopefully that gives it a little time, maybe, you know, we can get some grants or, you know, other things and hopefully be able to push that portion of the trail, which would go on most likely the west side of Maine from Nebraska and connect up to our trail at Cortlandt. But then, like I said, also, we want to make sure to get people, now that we pushed the residential there, which there's a lot of people there, I do get a lot of questions on that, two-lane road, difficult access, so I'd like to look at how do you cross even Main Street there. It's not the easiest place even to cross when we have a trail on the west side, so.
And so you're talking at Maine and Harding to look at that?
Definitely Maine and Harding, yep. Yep.
Main Street north of the interstate, still rural cross-section, same pavement with?
Yep. So if you look in here, that's, we want to look at multiple cross-sections and my hope is to bring them to all of you. Obviously, we'll be looking at rural drainage with a separated bike trail, but also, you know, potentially looking at, you know, a more urban section. But we want to kind of look at both those alternatives and cross-sections and we'll communicate with you guys on which direction to go.
And the 880, was it?
Yep.
88,000, what's your, I guess, rough estimate right now?
Well, it's an 80/20 split, so 20% are, so it was a little over a million, but that's just for the patching and the mill and overlay portion from Jackson to Cortlandt. So this could, like I said, with that engineering part of it, could obviously morph into a much larger project depending on what we want to do. But I don't want to not do the Phase One engineering because that's going to make it kind of a mess on if there's potential funding that funnel through the state or the feds are going to require that Phase One engineering. So I want to at least include, you know, where the trail is, you know, that being soil borings, environmental, you know, the Phase One, as you know, Ken, is very expansive. So we want to include as much stuff as we can in the Phase One, just to leave our options open. Otherwise, it's going to get really messy and we're probably better off wait until after FY '28 to do other work.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item B. In front of you is a Resolution 26-25, or 36-25, a resolution authorizing agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for school crossings project.
You can have it approved.
Second.
So this is the engineering with Hanson. We've kind of changed the scope a little bit to get around 40,000, 44,000, not to exceed. I've been working with the school district superintendent Smauck and also assistant superintendent Sanders and staff. We've been successful at the junior high, high school in Jefferson with improving the crossings in ADA. So this, what we have in front of us here is new pedestrian crossings at Lincoln, which would be two of them, which would be at Crestwood and then also at Jefferson and also one at Grande and then one at Letty Brown. So this agreement here would be for the village to pay for the design and engineering, which we've done previously, and basically putting plans together, putting it out for bid. The school has agreed to pay half the cost. Now with that, once we bid it, we'll bring it to both boards and for you guys to formally approve that. So this is between the superintendents and myself and, like I said, he's communicating with his board and we feel pretty good about it. The crossings, obviously, if you've been out there, they're a thing of the past and they're in dire need to be improved from the old beacons in the middle of the sidewalk. So I think it's a good improvement. This will finish most everything. We may have a couple, like Nebraska at Jackson, there's a crossing which IDOT would be involved with, those are, you know, one that we've talked about. But this should cover pretty much a majority of the crossings, at least for the schools. And again, it'll make it safe at night, so you press the push button, it'll be a little more clear at night and off school hours, too. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item C. I'd like to ask to waive formal bidding and ask for acceptance of proposal from Lighthouse Automotive for a new 2025 GMC Sierra for the water distribution department in the amount of $43,000, $43, and this would be for FY '25, so the current fiscal.
Any motion?
Second.
Just a summary, I've got four trucks here. We worked with all the locals, you'll see all of them have a truck here. We worked hard to get very close and to be able to work with all the dealers on this. So I communicated that with all of you guys. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I still have a comment. You have to work off of the government contract. Unfortunately, in my experience, the local four-dealer can't give a local municipality a vehicle from their lot, so this is nice and it gives Mike Murphy Ford a chance to buy a vehicle from the property. So good job on that.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the first Ford in quite some time, so we're excited to work with each of them. Obviously, we wanted them within reason and I think they are, so, and they were all excited to get, feel like they got a truck.
Did you want to get the list?
Yeah.
No other questions? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item D, waive formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Mike Murphy Ford for a new 2024 F-150 four-wheel drive truck for the community development department in the amount of $43,230. And then this one and the next two are for FY '26, so we would not make payment until May 1 this year.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item E. I'd like to ask to waive formal bidding and ask for acceptance of proposal from Sam Lehman Automotive Group for a new 2025 Dodge four-wheel drive truck for the water treatment department in the amount of $40,442.70 for FY '26.
Any motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Lastly, for our fourth dealer, item F, waive formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Bob Grim Chevrolet for a new 2025 Chevy Traverse for the public works department in the amount of $40,770 for FY '26.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item G. I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal through Sourcewell and from Outtorfer Incorporated for a new 2025 CAT 30607 mini excavator for the water distribution department in the amount of $59,985.33 for FY '26. This does include the trade and guaranteed buyback of our 2021 CAT 306 mini excavator and that includes $45,000 trade.
Motion to approve. Second.
This was ready for buyback in this fiscal, but March of next year. Unfortunately, we got way more use out of this than we thought and we're at the hours of the buyback, which would void the buyback. So we reached out to Oil Torfer, did a little homework, $45,000 was the number. We felt like that was a reasonable amount out there and felt like now was the time. They would give us 30 days to accept that since we exceeded the 1,500. And the new one, I believe, has 2,500 on it. So again, we were going to budget in this fiscal year, but we kind of moved it ahead, like I said, due to the losing the buyback on that.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item H, ordinance 25-18. This would authorize the sale of certain vehicles and equipment.
Can I motion?
Move. Second.
There's some trustee Leach has worked with me for a long time ago, I don't know if he remembers this, but bringing forward the sale of any surplus equipment. So with the trucks tonight, that's included in here, so there's a list. So the three trucks that we'd like to sell on Gov. deals as a result of acquiring these trucks would be the '05 Ford Ranger, otherwise known as White Lightning, if you've seen it out there. We have an '06 Chevy and an '06 Ford truck. And, you know, they're nearing the end of their life, so the mechanic would definitely like to see these go very soon. So we'll sell those on Gov. deals. And in addition, as we switched over to census and we're slowly making that move to census meters this year, we'll bring to you a plan for subsequent years, but our own guys are going to slowly start installing the census for us to get a good feel on it. As a result of that, we do have surplus Badger meters and the Orion radios that we purchased a while back. So my guys have been working with the village of Carlock and we'd like to sell 20 Badger meter bases and 20 Orion radios to them and that's half the price of what we got them for several years ago. So 55 bucks a piece for the meter bases and $95 each for the radios. So that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
I think it's wise to be able to sell this stuff. You know, I remember trustee Leach had this before, being able to get something out of something that's not of value to us anymore, but be able to recoup some of that cost. I mean, thinking just the Badger meters, you know, what would you do with those if you didn't have the Gov. deals?
Yeah. So that one, we are going to sell straight to Carlock. I want to make sure you guys knew that, but yes, yeah.
But that idea of being able to get something back, get some value back out of that, I think is great.
And thanks to Zach and Nick, they pretty much manage that and do all the work in Gov. deals. Just keep in mind, too, Gov. deals have been nice because a lot of times you sell equipment, the first people that come to you is an employee, like, hey, can I get that white truck, which just causes us problems because then the next guy wanted it. So we have had local people do get our stuff on Gov. deals. So we had a local contractor get our truck. So if anyone wants to go on Gov. deals and purchase our vehicles, you can get on there, register and you can buy our stuff, but it's through an auction to buy it, so it works out real nice.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is, for approvals, Resolution 38-25. I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for mowing, trimming, and collections of accumulated litter in multiple locations within the village of Morton.
Motion. Motion to approve. Second.
So we've run with part-time seasonal mowers. Our last one decided he was going to spend some more time at home, so we won't name who that is, but anyway, so we did a lot of work on this. This is a one-year contract. We got eight bidders, so there's a lot of competition for that. I think there were 35 locations. I mean, it's not the prettiest mowing, right-of-way mowing. So Lonson Moore got the lowest of the eight at a price of $1,974 per week. I do anticipate, you know, max 30 mowings, so if you multiply 30 times that, I plan to budget $60,000 upon approval and that'll come out of the street department. So with that, one year, Laura Daisy still will do hers and then Andrew Winkle still has a few of his, so we're going to reevaluate everything and all of our stuff next year and bring to you guys kind of what we feel is the best plan, whether we contract it all out, split it up, or maybe even find out that it's cheaper to hire or go back to the seasonal. So unfortunately, with seasonal, it's hard to find the right people at the right time sometimes. So our last two were excellent employees that we had nothing to worry about, so. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any conservators for the difference? I mean, bidding is bidding.
I mean, some of those, I probably wouldn't have brought it to you tonight because it would have been cheaper for us to come to you and say, can I hire a guy? And we do this. So I think this one was, I would say this one and the next one, to me, was in the ballpark. You know, and mowers aren't cheap anymore either, so we were spending five-plus thousand a year just for residential slash commercial mowers to run in these areas, so that's probably about the range.
Good job with them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Parrot.
Yes.
Blueear.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Last is item D. This is an announcement. Our spraying yard waste disposal program will be open beginning Monday, March 31st and will run through Sunday, April 27th. Like usual, will be closed on Good Friday and Easter, which is April 18th and April 20th, and this will be run from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily for our four-street plan. So we welcome everybody out. We believe everybody loves that, so welcome you out. Please follow the rules. We'll have guys out there. If you don't follow the rules, we'll probably catch you and you'll be banned. But other than that, please take care of it because we want to keep it there for a long time, so.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
All right. Planning and zoning.
I have two items tonight, Your Honor, first being item A, easement vacation plat in 050501203002, pin 050501203008, and pin 050501203009 in the Trails of Timber Oaks.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
This has been given a favorable recommendation by the plan commission this past Monday. Craig and myself and the property owners have been working together to work towards this, to basically pave the way for a new single-family home to be built on this new lot.
So there's a survey plat to follow on this that we have in our office. That will be recorded after everything, too. And again, if you guys have been out there, there's two lots left to sale. There's only enough room for one lot due to the topography, so I think this is a really good thing. Mike Hannels, the builder, so this would be a good one to polish off this section of this subdivision.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blueear.
Yep.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second item tonight, Your Honor, is item B, easement vacation plat pin 060622101019, pin 060622101020 in Fieldstone subdivision.
Do we have a motion?
Sound move. Second.
Very similar story here, working with the property owners and Craig, and basically making the way for a new single-family home in Fieldstone.
So this is just a combination of lots through the county, but this will vacate the easements in between the two lots on the corner there, so they'll be able to build. There's a little work to still be done, there are a couple pedestals in the utility easement